Thank you all for coming tonight. We know it'll probably be a light crowd with the present time of the year, the lot of farmers trying to finish up planning. We're having our families, Feeding Families County Commission Forum tonight. People in front of us could possibly be our voices in shaping and making many decisions of the voters in Yankton County. So, we're glad you took the time to attend. We're going to tape this event that will be on our website for others to view at their leisure. Right now, let's say, I'd like to lay this to our great friends. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in America, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. What we're going to do tonight, first thing, we're going to have the candidates. We're going to kind of do a timing thing so it doesn't get too late. First, I would like each of you to introduce yourselves, get a couple minutes, why you're running for the county commission. Just remember, we are very strong agriculture advocates. So, tonight, we're going to mostly concentrate on those issues. So, anyway, first, John, if you want to get, introduce yourself and why you're running.
My name is John Markport. I was wondering if you were going to...
No, I'll share it.
My name is John Markport. I was born and raised in Clayton, South Dakota, small town, rural area, 60 miles north-west of here. Grew up working for a lot of the farmers, picking rocks, shocking grain, fixing fence and those kind of things. I attended Emory High School, grade school actually, and then on to high school. I started playing men's basketball when I was 13 years old, so I got a lot of experience working with elderly people and went on to umpiring softball.
Why would you say that, Delmar?
I am, I am. Actually, I met my wife, Gail, in Milltown, South Dakota, one night when Johnny Holmes was playing with his band onstage there. So, my wife and I have three wonderful children and one extraordinary granddaughter. Lindsay is in San Francisco, California. Jessica is in New Braunfels, Texas, and Kyle is in Harrisburg, South Dakota. In 1995, my wife and I made the decision to move to Yankton, South Dakota. One of the best decisions that we've ever made, probably, because I think Yankton and Yankton County is one of the best places to live in the state of South Dakota, not only because of the rural areas and the agriculture that is here, but also the lake area and things like that. Probably outside of the weather for about two weeks out of the year, Yankton's area is probably the best place in the United States to live, as far as I'm concerned. I then started working with the trucking companies, so I gained a lot of experience with Markport Transportation. Safety issues, dealing with truck drivers, transparency, 175 truck drivers, you've got to be very transparent. So, did that up until, basically, today. So, that's my story.
I'm Chris Markle, running for county commission. I grew up just outside of Yankton, west of town here, on a farm, and I guess I currently still farm with my parents out there. We run about 1,500 acres, corn, beans, wheat, and we have cow calf operation and beat out our own calves and kind of have a little bit of everything. I graduated from Yankton High School, went on to go to college at USD for accounting. I graduated with a master's in accounting there. That's also where I met my wife. Her name's Olivia. She's now currently a high school math teacher in Irene. And now, I guess I've got my CPA license and I own my own tax business, so it keeps them busy in the wintertime and I'm busy farming the rest of the year. And I guess I'm running for county commission because I think that there needs to be a strong voice for agriculture and I think that I bring that perspective to the table. And then I've also got the technical knowledge of rules and laws and regulations that I deal with all the time in my accounting practice. And I've been serving now on the Planning and Zoning Commission of the county the last several years, and I'm currently the chair on that Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I have a little bit of experience in dealing with county issues, and I think that I can do a lot more good for the county being on the county commission now.
I'm Butch Becker. I grew up, was born here in Yankton, and I packed up the Secar Hospital. Lived across the river, across the creek, I'd say. St. Lena, Nebraska, and then Crofton. And I had, I'm on a number of different boards, and one of them has to do with the Sediment Action Coalition for the Missouri River. And that's really close to my heart because I grew up on the lake. My dad built the first marina on Lewis and Clark Lake. All my relatives were on the farm, so I spent a lot of time on the farm in my youth with my cousins, learning how to herd ducks and everything, a lot of different things. I went to school, Wayne State College and Yankton College. I then to the university, on to the University of South Dakota, specialized or studied in business law and accounting, and decided I didn't want to be a CPA because I'm sure there was a short lifespan for CPAs. So, I had my own businesses, city markets, car washes and such, and I've been on both sides of hiring attorneys, I guess you might say. I was with Nationwide Agribusiness, and I learned a lot about ag. I ran for almost 14 years. I was with Nationwide doing claims, ag claims, large and small, large up to 22 million and small ones. I used to handle all of the hutterite insurance and all their, do all of their claims, so I understand many aspects of ag. And at that, I was with nor engineering for 13 years, wherein we did cause and origin investigations and such things, worked with a lot of attorneys, so understand the law, how it applied. And it's because of my background and 15 years in the zoning board for Yankton County that I feel I can contribute with much experience.
Thank you. One other thing I wanted to remind you that I forgot, has mine ringing. Please turn off your cell phones. We're going to rotate through on every other question, so I'm going to have Chris go first. As a county commissioner, will you vote to support a right to farm covenant as part of Yankton County's comprehensive plan? Why or why not?
Yes, I would. Vote to include the right to farm in the comprehensive plan. Last August, I guess it was, when the new zoning amendments went in, one of the things that did get put in there was a version of this right to farm, and that's in the zoning ordinance, which is a little bit different than the comprehensive plan. But I was a big supporter of having that in there, and I would definitely push to have it in the comprehensive plan because I think it's really important that people understand things that are going on out in the county and the different issues that apply to agriculture. And I think it's, if nothing else, it's a good thing for people to be informed and to have an idea of what's going on before maybe locating out in the county or just to have an awareness of how things work.
Yes, I believe, I also agree with Chris, that the right to farm notice or covenant should be included. I understood it was, I understood that's the way it was, knowing Yankton is an ag county and that's, when the zoning was set up, that was part of the heading. That was, that everything has to be done with that as a primary interest to Yankton. And I know there's a number of people that have claimed ignorance as to understanding what goes on in the ag. I can't understand, I didn't understand why we need it, but everything has to be in favor now, so.
Well, I agree with both of these gentlemen that the right to farm notice covenant should be included in the right to farm. And also, I believe that it should be strongly addressed to the people that are out in the country buying property, building houses or whatever, that they have definitely read this and understand it. And sometimes it takes a little bit more to get in people to understand what is important to Yankton County, which is the agricultural aspect of it, the dust, the late hours during farm, during planting season and things like that. So, this is definitely something that I would support.
Thank you for that. Okay, Butch, as a county commissioner, will you vote to approve a CAFO application that is 100% compliant with the stated requirements in Article 5 of the zoning ordinance? Bear in mind, this is inclusive of beef cattle, dairy, hogs, poultry, whatever comes down the pike.
Yes, I would, as long as it qualifies for, with everything that's in the ordinance. And if there needs, need be, I mean, as far as distance restrictions and such, if the people that are around are neighbors or whatever, ask, ask that it not be passed or be allowed. As long as it's still with the requirements, I would say I would vote for it.
Again, as long as all of the regulations provided by the state, the county ordinances and those things, yes, I would vote to allow a CAFO in Yankton County. Obviously, there needs to be strict policing of those regulations also, though, and I'm sure that the state, the county and people will be out enforcing those regulations.
I would also vote to approve it. And I believe that legally, if they are meeting all the requirements, you can't deny them. And with Yankton County, with our current zoning ordinance, I believe that we have some of the most restrictive zoning ordinance in the whole state. And it's kind of unfortunate that with the current provisions that were done last year, that it pretty much would ban almost all CAFOs of any kind of size in the county. And like I said, I find that unfortunate, and if they were able to meet the new restrictions, I'd definitely vote for them.
Okay, John, there's been much rhetoric about family farms, factory farms, corporate farms. Please share your definition of a family farm, a corporate farm or a factory farm. How many of each are currently located in Yankton County? Which could be tough to say now.
I'm not sure how many family farms there are in Yankton County. I'd assume there's probably 550 somewhere in that neighborhood. Factory farms, is there any?
What's that?
Factory farms? I don't believe there's any. Corporate farms, I think they should be very limited if there are any corporate farms in Yankton County right now. Corporate farms in my mind would be if Cardill comes in here and buys up a whole bunch of property and farms it and builds a bunch of buildings on it, raising cattle, hogs, sheep, chickens, whatever. That, to me, is a corporate farm, and I would struggle to allow them to come in and do such a thing. Factory farms, I still don't even think that I can wrap my handle around what that actually means, but family farms, I'm 100% in favor of promoting family farms, figuring out a way that we can increase our family farms or at least build upon them. Like I mentioned in my introduction, I was born and raised in a small rural community where, when I go back there to visit now, today, family farms are few and far between. And my goal as a county commissioner would be to support and provide any assistance that I can think of to make sure that we do not lose the family farms in Yankton County.
Like John said, I think that nearly all of the farms in the county are family farms. I'm not aware of any so-called corporate farms. Technically, being a CPA, I would say that there are farmers that are set up as corporations, but that's not what people are talking about. And I guess, I think that we need to support our family farms, and there's been a lot of misinformation going with seeing new modern buildings or modern equipment, and people that have kind of a disconnect from the farm, they might think that's an evil corporate farm because they see new things going on, but that is just the evolution of the modern family farm going, and it's family farmers like myself that are out there working in those facilities or running that equipment every day. And I think that we need to encourage that and not increase those restrictions because if you increase these restrictions, you're going to put out the family farmers, and the only ones that'd be left that can afford to comply are the corporate farms that everybody's afraid of.
In my insurance life, I had worked with people, family farms, corporate and some factory farms, like Tyson and some of the others that were large. They controlled every aspect of how the animals are grown, the feed that went to them, it was all back and forth. But tonight, I would don't think that is the best for environment for Yankton County myself. Family farms, like guys are saying, I think most everything in Yankton is considered family farm, whether it be corporation incorporated somewhere along the line. Corporate farms, I don't see any here. I see, I've run into a lot of corporate type farming operations over in Iowa, especially in the chicken and egg industry. So, I've worked in, worked in all different areas with those, with claims, and some of them wouldn't be ideal, I don't think they're, let's say, Christian.
Zane, before your next question, I just want to add something that is out of the ag study. We will have open, in about six or seven more questions, or we've just got two or three more questions, then we're going to open it up. And then we'll actually have, if anybody has questions, to come up here so everybody can hear it. Agriculture has been, always and is a major economic driver in Yankton County. Please share your thoughts on the future of agriculture as an economic driver in Yankton County. What will Yankton County look like in the future for agriculture? As a Yankton, or as a county commissioner, will you embrace opportunities that will allow Yankton County farmers to utilize the 21st century technology? If yes, how, and if no, why not? Who's first? You, you first, or that? Good thing you're keeping this.
So, I think that farming has changed a lot over the years, and I think it's going to continue to change, and that's just reality because of economics of farming and just reality of life, technology advances and things become less labor intensive and more efficient. And I think you can see that where years ago, everybody might have had a few chickens and a few cows and a few hogs, and now people kind of specialize in one thing or another because of efficiencies and get better at things. And I think that we need to be open to that in the future, and just because one guy's got all pigs and one guy's got all cows or whatever, that's not a bad thing, or just because they've got large equipment and the other guy's got smaller equipment that looks like what grandpa had, it doesn't matter, it's all farm, and we need to be open to all of it and be supportive. I think that in the future, I believe that our zoning laws, again, I mean, as much as it's kind of like beating a dead horse, we need to revisit that again. Also, I think that we need to invest into like our infrastructure. We've got a lot of roads and things that service all of this farm economy that are getting into poor shape, and we need to repair it and make it usable for the future as things continue to advance and equipment's bigger and everything has to keep up with that. And times change and everything has to change with it, and I think that we just need to be open to it.
I agree. One of the main things that's coming down the pike, I just heard yesterday, had to do with a John Deere that'll leave the shed on its own and go out in the field and hook up to the equipment, and not electric, by the way, it's totally diesel, thank God. But there's, I think, keeping the family farm is a necessity, and it's, you know, the technical advances can, I think, actually help advance the smaller farms again. Because, you know, it doesn't, everything doesn't have to be huge as far as the equipment. You know, my, my grandpa farmed with an A and B and, while he's carrying mail to, to the rural customers. And this is the basis for what the background is and what all the education and the people that are in, in the county, you can look where you want, everything comes back to farming.
Again, I, again, I agree with both of these gentlemen that technology's going to be the leading force in the future for, not only for agriculture, but for all, all things viable in rural Yankton County. You've got the smaller communities, cities, small towns, are all going to be looking forward to technology improvements. Like Chris said, not everybody's going to have the big track four tractors and 26 row corn planters, but everybody is going to be able to utilize the technology that is provided by the seed tender dealers and the fertilizer companies and those kind of things. So, the future of Yankton County in 10 to 15 years is going to depend on the people that are sitting out here in the crowd and the family farms. You know, back, back in Clayton, South Dakota, my parents owned a little general store, and the farmers come in and they, they needed to have us with the supplies on the shelves just as much as we needed them to come in and purchase them. Technology has changed that to a certain degree, but it still boils down to the, the farmers need the general store, and the general store needs the farmers, so.
Okay. Are you aware of the America the Beautiful 30x30 land grab put into place on January of 21th, by the registration? This plan supports a goal of 30% of the US lands and waters to be permanently under the control of the federal government and idled by the year 2030. If you don't know about it, that's, it's just something that is very concerning to us as a group and to everybody because we take 30% of our land out of production. What will that do to our local economy? So, if you know anything, why don't please share?
Yes, I've read it, read up on and heard about the 30x30 land grab, you might want to call it.
Yep.
It's to urge people through monetary system to turn their, control of their land over to the government. Then we're talking production land, we're talking what feeds the world here. We have to understand that in, as in some states where there already, there's legislation going before the state where it keeps the ownership of the land out of, and control, not just ownership, but ownership and control out of the government's hand. And we have, that's essential. I think otherwise, they can take production land out of, like right now, I guess, it looks like we have about 10 or 12 weeks of wheat in the world right now, as far as what I was hearing about today, some emails I came across. And there's, of course, there's crops, you know, in the southern hemisphere that'll be harvested and brought online, but if this, this is a New World Order issue that they're trying to get done so they can take over. I heard, got an email from somebody, and it had a gentleman called Klaus Schwab who is speaking of, he's speaking of this and a number of different other issues that are going to be a concern to every county commission, every department, you know, every legislature, and we have to know about and do something about this.
I've also read and studied up and attended the forum here that the Families Feeding Families had here a month or six weeks ago. And it's, it's definitely something that the state of South Dakota, county commissioners, Yankton County especially, or all the county commissioners, need to take a look at and develop, and I would urge them right now to start working on a resolution to, to stop this from happening. Because if I'm memory searching correctly, I think with the programs and everything now, the farm programs and that, there's about 17% of the, of the land that is in control by the, not necessarily by the government, but through, through programs and that. So, their intentions are to take that 17%, plus another 13% by the year 2030. And if they do that, not only will it, and they take it out of production, just think of, there's people starving and being hungry all over the world right now, just think when that happens, when they take that extra percentage of land out of production, where's the food going to come from? So, we definitely need to get, open up our eyes to that program. One other thing, we do have to be careful when we're, when we're looking at these farm programs and taking grant money and that also, to make sure that, that, that nothing is tied to that, that program also. So, we need to, we need to manage what we can manage, so.
I've also heard about the 30x30, and I don't think that it's a good deal for anybody involved, really. And at the county level, I think, like John said, that we need to be careful of different grants that we, that we might apply for and what kind of strings are attached. Also, one of the biggest things that we have working against 30x30 is private ownership through people like our family farmers, and I think that we need to do everything we can to support them and not to regulate them out of business because that just promotes more and more things like this 30x30. And I think that one of the strongest things that we can do is encourage our family farmers to keep farming and keep it in the family and not turn it over into a corporate farm or into these government programs by taking it out of production because our county may
I think also, and of course, we've got one of our current county commissioners here, I think we also should, at some point, get a resolution made in Yankton County. Most of Nebraska's counties have already signed up for this, that we can make a resolution Most of Nebraska's counties have already signed up for this, that we can make a resolution that the federal government cannot amend to our, our county and, and demand some of these things. So that's something that we'll, we'll, we'll be approaching our current county commissioners. There's been talk of hiring a county manager. What is your thoughts on this? I've, I've heard some different things about this county manager and I'm, I'm not exactly sure how it all works, but it's a little new to me and what they actually do. But I've, I've heard that some of the, depending on what their duties are explained to them, that they actually have control above the county commission and above the planning and zoning. And I don't, I'm not exactly sure on that, but I've heard rumors of this. But what's your thoughts on hiring, employing another person for Yankton County?
So I don't know if you gentlemen were asked the question for, at the coffee with the candidate, but that was a question that we were asked. At first I said, no, I don't think we need to hire another, have another position, pay position, whatever. In my mind, I don't believe that if I were to look at a county manager, that position would not be above or in control of the county commission or any other, other departments or elected officials. My mind, a manager, county manager would be an assistant to the county commission if we even needed one. And that would be fully investigated when I would become commissioner if, if that were to happen. County manager would, like I said, would be an assistant. They would be the, the person I think that would do the groundwork to any, any requests that any, any constituent would have, to make sure and bring that as much information to the commission that they could possibly grant. Now, the decision-making would still be the commissioners' decisions to make, but we would base those decisions not wholly on that management's recommendation, but utilize and take it, take advice from that. That's, that's, that would be my thought of a county management, manager, if we were to agree to look at that position. I'd also would have that manager oversee, not oversee, but, but look at all the different departments. Can we share people? Can we share expenses? Can we share dump trucks? Can we, you know, those kind of things? So in my mind, that's what I would expect out of a county manager.
I guess I don't think that there's a need for another paid position, another bureaucrat in the county. I think that each department, whether it's planning, zoning, or whether it's the highway department or whatever, they've all got their heads of that department. And there's a county commissioner that's kind of assigned to each department to attend those meetings and to kind of be the person doing the groundwork for each of those. And then that commissioner, along with the department head, they kind of present whatever needs to be presented to the full county commission and that is your management board. That's what you're elected to do. And I guess our county is not so large that our county commissioners can't devote the time that it takes to do the research and the groundwork, to be informed on each, on each item. And I think that knowing that going in, that I'd be willing to put in the work that it takes to be informed, making decisions. And at this time, I guess I don't feel a need for a county manager. And I think that it would be a disservice to the voters to hire a county manager, especially if that county manager had some kind of authority above and beyond the county commission.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect we would need a county manager. I think we'd, we have enough talented people that are working in the county or on the commission would have on the commission. And if there would be a time where we would need an agent for the county to go out, if it's negotiation for, say, some hotel property or something out at the lake or whatever it happens to be, I think some part timers, some agents are like head under type deal. We could, we can, there are people out there that can do these different things and bring back the information to the county commission so the level heads can make some good decisions.
Well, that's all the kind of questions that we had, but I know most you had one. You want to come up here though, most? I'm sure everybody can hear you. And anybody else that wants to have a question, more than welcome. We will keep it settled and there are no personal attacks.
So mine's not really a question. Mine's something I think that everybody that lives in Yankton is associated with agriculture needs to actually know. So this is the 2021 Economic Contribution Study, South Dakota Agriculture, Ethanol and Forestry. So it's on page 12. It's some very interesting data that really talks about how valuable agriculture is in The smaller sized farms are generally hobby or specialty farms, or the farms larger size are typically make up the majority of farm sales. There are 5,847 farms in South Dakota. According to the, to 2017 Census Agriculture, 29,968 farms in South Dakota. 83% of those farms are family owned. And that's, that's super important to know because people don't know that. 8% are in partnerships and 6% are in family-held corporations and only 1% are considered factory farms. And I can provide this to anybody if they want it.
Thank you. Any other questions? John, do you, do you have one? Come on up.
I heard that you guys work with soil conservation sometimes? Maybe I should ask this man. I was at the Soil Conservation Board meeting and they said they work. They work with the county commission. I need to know if this is accurate. I don't talk a lot enough, huh? I want to know if the county commission works with the soil conservation. Okay. I don't know who goes to who, but I'm thinking if these guys get on the county commission, they should go to the soil conservation and encourage them to not encourage people to join the 30-30. Could you do that? Would you do that?
I think we're repeating what we were saying before, that we would be for any measures that it takes to keep the government from controlling the land. And this, this thing for, for the government that's coming from this, outside this country, it's, it's a world economic forum push is what it's for. And I think, you had, you had another question?
I was just going to say, at that soil conservation meeting, they knew nothing about 30-30. I had to tell them about it.
Well, I'm surprised about that.
Okay. Because you were the one. I served nine, 11, 11 and a half years on the Farm Service Agency Board here in Yankton County. Keep in mind, the Soil Conservation Office has nothing, well, they, they're a government entity, but this is all done through the Farm Service Agency here in Yankton. And that Farm Service Agency is well aware of this 30 by 30. They are not telling our farmers, and it's not their fault. It is just not being talked about. And how this is happening is through conservation easements. Now, a conservation easement is something that has been happening in this country for years. But what the government is doing with this 30 by 30 situation is they are taking those conservation easements, they're paying the farmer more than anyone can afford to pay them in rent. Now, they're not promising they're going to pay them in forever, but that contract is into perpetuity forever. And, and they are selling this 30 by 30, America the Beautiful, because they've renamed it, because it has been toted in the press as a 30 by 30 land grab. So now they've renamed it, America the Beautiful. And they are taking that land and they are setting it aside not to ever have human hands touch it. This is why all these NRAs and the Ducks Unlimited and all of them are jumping on to this 30 by 30 and supporting it because they're being lied to. And so what you want to be aware of is that when you're talking about this 30 by 30, which is getting to be, to be a big deal, because the government is not telling anyone else about the specifics of it, and they are sneaking it in to the legislatures and saying, all the citizens want this. The farmers want the 30 by 30. And why, what Families Feeding Families position is, may I say this, is we strongly want to encourage our county commissioners to support a resolution stating that we do not support 30 by 30 easement, conservation easement contracts into perpetuity in Yankton County. That will send a strong message to our governor and tell her that in Yankton County, we're not going to support the 30 by 30. Bon Home County, after attending our event here at Jodeen's, April, May? I don't know. We went to, we went to Lincoln, to the conference. They already have a resolution in their county. And they have stated, we will not allow them in our county.
So why don't we?
Well, because we, we just need to present to the, we haven't drawn up the resolution. And that's up to our county commissioners. And, and it is, you know, it basically is something stating, we're not, we're not for this. Now, keep in mind, if you're not a farmer, this affects you too. Because don't think they'll stop. They want 50% by 2050. And this is no human contact. No hunting, no fishing. It's like taking 30% of your home and you can't even go in that part and dust. No human contact. No human hands.
For climate change.
All in the name of the Green New Deal. Climate change. And, and which is correct. It's all part of this whole new world order thing. So it is a big deal. Okay, I'm done. Sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Hitting back to the question, I think was, if we deal with soil conservation or the 30 by 30, I think that it is important that we talk with them and have that conversation. I'm not sure how much control we actually have over those government agencies, but I definitely would support a resolution in the county stating that we're not going to go for that. But yeah, those conversations should we have with those different agencies so that everybody's kind of on the same page.
That's correct. And I, I agree with Chris 100% that, that we need to, any agencies that have anything to deal with, with Yankton County, we need to assist or inform them also. If they're not informed already, they should be, but sometimes it takes a little arm twisting and, and people pushing them also to, to understand what's going on. I, I, one of the articles that I read, there's a, there's a river in Montana that, that they, they took this river over and there was seven vocations to kayak and canoe, to get on and off at that river in a 27 mile stretch of the river. After five years of, of the government taking control or having control of that, now there's only two vocations. One in the beginning of the river and one at the end of their 27 miles. So you can't even, what, what it, what that affects is, who's going to get on that river in a canoe, canoe 27 miles and then either carry their canoe back up to their vehicle or have someone meet them at the other end? And that, that's how they're, that's how they're taking control of the property.
Hi there. If you guys get elected, what are you going to do to help develop agriculture in the county to attract new and younger farmers? I, I know there's a ton of programs out there that most people don't know about where young people can get started with livestock, but livestock is a dirty word in Yankton County. And I'm just kind of wondering if you have any plans as far as what we could do to change that? And it just amazes me that everybody, you know, livestock smells, so we can't have that. And then you drive past Simples. And I encourage everybody to drive past there and see how much that out of town company has invested in the county as of late. It hasn't been that many years ago the plant ended with a brick building. And it now goes another, another guy I talked to said about $35, $40 million to the west. And I, I think that unless you look around here and the average age of the farmers are retirement or passed. And we're going to have to get some younger blood in here or we're going to be, or you're going to have somebody comes in with a 48 row platter and just does a tomship or two. Do you have any plans for developing egg?
I was thinking developing egg would be similar to what we need to do as far as getting group, groups of people together to invest in education, but also invest in another opportunity for the people that are going to be approached with this 30-30 or 50-50 to buy, to buy up or to be the, an alternative way of them going rather than selling out to the government or the New World Order or whoever's going to question this thing. But we need to get, the farmers included, they need to understand that there has to be another avenue for their land to go to keep it in, keep it active and keep, keep young, younger people interested in the farm.
I agree with what you, education is, is one of the key things that, that we need to look at figuring out or, or having groups like the Families Feeding Families educate the, the young farmers also. Supporting 4H, FFA groups like that in the school system as, as county commissioners or, or groups of people going into the schools and, and supporting and, and helping them to develop their, those programs. Also, like Louis said, animals and livestock are a dirty word in Yankton County. Well, we need to figure out a way to clean that word up so that people can raise their livestock the way they want to raise, you know, if, if there's 4H cattle or, or feeder cattle that need to be raised in Yankton County, we need to figure out a way that we can make that happen. Same way with hogs, show hogs, whatever. Livestock and, and farming, raising seed and grain is the livelihood of the family farm. So we need to educate the people how to do that and manage a way that, that they can do it better and bigger.
I agree that education, different groups like this, go a long way into helping people understand the modern family farm and making that happen. At the county level, I think that we need to do things like, for instance, investing in like our roads that service the county so that it accommodates new, modern farming. And then also the biggest thing that And then also the biggest thing that we can do is, again, going back to the zoning, we got to make it so that you guys can get into farming. People may not realize how restrictive it is, but say that me as a young farmer, I wanted to go to my neighbor that lives down the road, he's getting close to retirement age. Maybe he had livestock for all of his life and in the last 10 years maybe he didn't because he's getting older and didn't want to deal with it. If I was going to go and buy him out and start up on his farm and wanted to have livestock, if I wanted to have over 200 head of cattle, I would have to start having all kinds of regulations go on me. If I wanted to put up a modern feeding barn for cattle or turkeys or chickens or hogs even, I'd have virtually no chance of doing that if it was of any economical size because of the restrictions in this county. So it stops the young guy from getting into it because with the prices of land and commodities and everything, it just doesn't pencil out. Livestock is where the young guy can still put in the labor and still get into farming. And we need to encourage that, not discourage it. Otherwise, we're going to have more guys that are retiring, the farm just goes into a partnership or trust because nobody can afford to get into farming and then it gets signed up into these government programs and away it, and away it goes and it's kind of just gone forever. And so we need to encourage young people to get in, in the places that they can. And a lot of that comes with livestock and people need to understand that being in an ag-based community and especially when you're out in the county, there are things like livestock and dust and smells, and that's just part of life and that's the way it goes. And that's the way it's kind of always been. The county has not been devoid of livestock forever and this is some new phenomenon that's coming over. It's just that we have a larger disconnect with people that are maybe several generations removed from the farm. And I think that that's where education can play a part in helping bridge that gap between people and their understanding of farming. And I think that as county, we need to encourage farmers and not try to put them out of business.
I do have to echo those sentiments. As a guy that started a few years ago farming, it was the only way I would have ever got into it, milking 40 cows, which is unheard of in today's world, that the only way that young guys can work 18 hours a day, you can't when we're 65. We still feed a lot of livestock and I still believe in it very strongly. Any other questions?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so my question is to the commissioner candidates, what are your thoughts or concerns on Yankton County election integrity and the use of e-poll books and counting machines, which as a county commissioner you ultimately are in charge of?
Obviously, the integrity of the voting system in the state of South Dakota is very important to be looked at and watched over. I don't necessarily see at the local level an issue where we need to worry about the integrity, but at the state level, there's definitely a need to make sure that, that it's policed as best that it can be policed. And I think in the state of South Dakota, there's enough assistance and people to probably mainly count the votes by hand versus running them through a machine that can be tied up to the internet or whatever. However, with technology and everything, do we really need to change what's going on now or put more regulations on how it's handled and make sure that, that that machine can't be messed with?
I think that the election integrity is very important and there needs to be oversight and everything like this, as far as machines and tying it to the internet and all that kind of stuff. I think that at our local level, the way we've been doing it with paper ballot and then those get counted, that's been working and I think there's no need to really change that. We don't need a machine sitting in the voting booth where somebody goes and punches on that, especially in the state of South Dakota where we have election results that same night usually. So I don't see a need for any of this change of functioning, more manual system to go into anything new where you see all these issues. Maybe down the road, that's something that needs to be looked at as far as when we grow into that, but really I think that we have a good thing going now and as long as we stay vigilant and have a run oversight over it, that I think things can continue to go well.
I believe there are two main issues about voting, whether it be here or anywhere else, is the absentee ballot and how it was, it's been abused. And if you haven't seen the movie, the Nesta Susan movie, 2000 Mules, you need to see it because it shows how they, how the people were tracked, how their vote harvesting is the second item. And it's with absentee ballots that they do this and that, we were warned about that before the election, but, and some people are now saying, wait until this fall, there's going to be another pandemic or epidemic or something that could cause them to try to get votes out, get the ballots out again, send them out to everybody. And I know, I know people that have gotten five or six ballots for different people at their, at their home and the people do not live there. I mean, they haven't, they may, may have lived there before, but these voter lists need to be scrutinized. And, and just, we, we don't see the absentee ballots going out the way they're talking about just mailing to everybody that's on the phone list. Well, not many phone lists, but they've got lists that the government's been trying to get the, get the, the current government entities are trying to get absentee ballots sent to everybody under the sun.
Can I, can I make a, just a follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I do think it's interesting that we are discussing the 30 by 30 land grab. And if we think that that's possible, what's the possibility that the fact that our elections have some integrity issues, not only at the state level, the national level, but also the local level, because the local level does affect the state level and so on? Now, one thing I might add here is how many people here have gone and watched the county voting process all the way through, from the start of the day to the end of the day? Some of you, perfect. I, I challenge more people to do that because one of the things, just like you were just saying, Chris, is yes, we do use paper ballots, but they do go into a machine. And because a machine is in a room, doesn't mean that we're able to check how that machine is functioning. So that's all I'm saying is there's a lot of things that people might think are good, just like everybody says, "Oh, the 30-30 can't be real. Who would ever do that?" So I just challenge people to say, take it a different, take some personal interest and go and check it out. That's all. And so thank you guys for answering that question. I appreciate it very much.
John, you have a question?
Yes, someone, John Gunderson from Irene. As someone who's been involved with the county the last few years in zoning and extensive litigation, one question that has been virtually impossible to identify is how many pending lawsuits there are. We figure there's at least 15 pending lawsuits, most of which are zoning issues. Recently, Judge Noff ruled that the 2006 amendments to the zoning ordinance were invalid. The attorneys we've talked to said basically it invalidates the ordinance and takes it back down to 2003. It's one of the things you're going to have to address at the beginning if you, if and when you are elected. I got a whole bunch of other stuff that they say I got to behave.
Give it to Chris. Oh, you're on the hot seat. As far as the pending litigations, I guess I don't have that much insight into them. As far as throwing out an old amendment, we do have a current amendment, which I would assume takes precedent for going forward. And that would be a legal issue that we'd have to sort out right away. But yeah, I guess honestly, I would have to do more research into that to know exactly what's going on with those litigations. And I guess not being on the county commission currently, I don't have any special insight into that to provide to you guys.
I've often wondered the same thing about the number of lawsuits that are pending with the county. And I know, I know of two myself and a third one that was settled. And that's just people I know personally. I think, I think there could be some avenue whereby we have participation with our county attorney insofar as deciding some of these factors beforehand or deciding, giving the county commission the proper ammunition, you might say, so they, they know and make sure it hits the gun. Because like you say, I, I heard about this judge saying, Judge Knopf. I heard, I did hear something about that or read something someplace that he said that the, the illegalities in the new zoning. And I'm not sure exactly what portion that it was, but I did hear about it. Needs to be addressed.
So I'm kind of in the dark also with the, the litigations and those things that are going on, but if, if the, the new ordinance is, is as written, I guess I don't even know where that is at either. I did hear some rumblings also about what you're talking about, that the latest one or that was, was denied by the judge and that it rolls back. But if, if we're looking at 2003 ordinances, there's obviously something that needs to be brought up to date. And if that's the, the, going to be one of the first things that's thrown at the, at the county commissioners when we take office, then I'm all for looking at them and seeing what we can do to, once again, if there's ordinances or rules in that ordinance, it needs to be changed to assist the, the young farmers to get them available so that, that they can move on to the farm or move into the country and assist their parents or, or take over the, the family farm. I'm all for digging in and, and checking into that.
My question has to do with the amount of turnover in the last three and a half years at the county level. Because whenever you have significant turnover in a business, it's not good for the business. And the county is a type of business. There have been a number of positions that have turned. There's been a number of people that have just left for some reason or another because they were uncomfortable in that environment. And I really think that going forward, the, it's something that the county commission is going to have to deal with because when you're not comfortable going in and talking to someone that's in a position, speaking from personal experience, we had someone call us because they had been told they had to put together a new CUP for a farm that burned. It was a fire. And someone at the county said, "No, you have to start the whole process all over." Well, turned out that with a little encouragement and conversation, they were able to change their mind. But had others not gotten involved, it would have really put a strain on this family. And so as commissioners, although you can't micromanage, but I do think there needs to be some type of HR process that gets input from the citizens in terms of performance of individuals that are employed by the county. And so I just would be interested in hearing your thoughts about how you can reduce turnover and keep those that, that need to be there and then take to task those that are working on a personal agenda instead of the county agenda. Who gets this? John, I think.
Wow. So HR, human relations is, it's, it's not, I'm not a master at it, but I've been trained very well on it with, through the trucking business. I don't know how well you know or have dealt with truck drivers, but they're probably one of the, the hardest group of people to satisfy on a daily basis. You satisfy them one day and the next day they're totally pissed off at you for some reason or another. I, I can honestly say that we're, we're running about 65 trucks right now. I've been in the trucking business for 25 years and I've never had an opportunity to fire a truck driver. Two and a half months ago I did. And that's, that's got a lot to do with, with HR and satisfying people to keep them on the job and the tasks that they're, they're scheduled to do. So that's, my experience in that aspect is going to be a plus, I believe, in what you're talking about Sandy, is, is dealing with the people themselves and, and figuring out a way to make them understand what has to happen now and what the future is going to be for them down the road. You know, let's face it, anybody can, can just get upset for any reason whatsoever today and tomorrow they can be employed again. And we don't want that to happen because it costs a ton of money to retrain somebody to take that position. So I guess my experience in the HR department and, and that, I think hopefully I can, I can assess and help take care of that issue.
Some of the issues with the turnover, I believe, come from basically the county commission or whoever coming in with a set agenda and they are basically sometimes looking for personnel that will comply with that. And that can lead to people either leaving or being fired. And that also goes back to the litigation question, I think, comes when people try to push something that isn't necessarily legal or to our zoning ordinance or whatever because they've got a personal belief about it. Instead of going through the correct process to change it, they do want to force their own way through changing personnel or whatever. And then also a part of the problem with HR, and I've seen it on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and of no fault of our Planning and Zoning Department, but a lot of times they come back and they say, "Well, this has to be the answer because this is what the county commission will approve," or "This is what the county commission says has to happen," instead of just going by the actual ordinance itself or going by what's written. They go by what they feel the county commission will accept. And I don't think that's necessarily right. I think that everybody should do what is written and what's legal and play by the rules that are set. And if you have a problem with that, then work to change those rules through the correct process and not try to force your own way through.
I, I think it's just a matter of being, listening to everything and being fair. You have to understand that every, most, most people have an agenda of some kind and I don't, I think they should be able to, we easily recognize it in most cases, but it needs to be set aside and you have to go by the rules.
but it needs to be set aside and you have to go by the rules. We have, there's a rule book there that we have to follow. And anytime a private agenda gets in the way, we have to be able to recognize that, call a halt, take a person aside, say, you know, this can't be this way. If it needs a conditional use or something else, CUP, there are channels that it can be done if the people are cooperative and if you're not stepping on somebody's toes and taking advantage of them.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, if not, we'll maybe conclude this forum and thank you three guys for coming. The other three. Any last words? It's time to go.
One closing thought or whatever you want to call it, I think that we need to also mention our police force and our sheriff's department here tonight in lieu of the tragedy that happened down in Texas this morning at the school down there in Eufaula, Texas. 14 young people were killed and I think there was 15 more in the hospital when I last heard. So whatever, anytime that anybody here has an opportunity to thank our law enforcement, because I think they do a well of a job here in training with the officers at the school, training the schools and everything else also. So let's give a shout out to them whenever we have an opportunity also.
Thank you. I hadn't heard about that one yet. Yep, the vote is on June 7th. And I wish the other commissioners could have been, or commissioners in trying, could have been here, but a couple of them did call and said they couldn't come and one was out of town, so appreciate you guys showing up. Thank you for all coming and you have a good evening.